All right, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. First of all, is there anyone who'd like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda? Is that you, Chris, or are you waiting for later?
I would just like to request that we maybe move stuff around on the agenda because I am recused from the votable thing stuff.
Yep.
So we can do other items beforehand, so.
I think we can do that. I wanted to just make a brief public speak.
Okay.
Chat is no longer on the planning board. Served on this planning board probably longer than I've been alive, was already an experienced member here when Jim and I came on, what, eight, nine years ago now?
Yeah, long time.
Harry probably knows exactly how long, maybe not, but I believe he was even back when it was an elected position.
Well, he was on a conservation first.
Okay.
And then he got, he left that and came on this.
So we've sort of already moved on to transition stuff, but I wanted to not let it pass without saying something on the record that I think we all always appreciated his input and participation, and he will be sorely missed at least.
Absolutely.
On the board here.
I know he meowed a lot when I first got on the board.
Yeah, I think he's been doing that for years.
When I first got on the board, I didn't know anything. I'm not that I'm a genius and all, but.
You're better than he were.
I didn't know anything back then, you know?
All right, so.
That's great.
Moving along, no planning board minutes, no A and Rs. So we're okay with moving the Park Street to the end? Does that work for everybody?
It works for me.
Okay.
You can vote for it if you like.
I don't think we need to vote for that.
I understand.
All right, next up then is election of officers. I will once again volunteer to be chair unless someone really wants to.
Can I feel the same about vice chair? I'm happy in my position.
Perfect, same, 100% okay with that.
But I'm totally happy that you're happy.
Let's finish one at a time. Can someone nominate me to be chair?
I nominate Jesse Boucher-Tim to be the chair of the planning board.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You voting for yourself?
Standing, I'll vote for anybody, including myself. All right, I'll nominate Jim to be vice chair.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's all we have for officers, right, Jeff?
Yep.
Discussion regarding attendance. Jeff?
Harry has raised a question about taking a leave of absence, and it caused a couple of questions about the procedure or process to do that. I think on the. On the board, on the table is an email.
Oh, yeah.
From Lindsay, which, who did, helped with some research, and this is an excerpt from the charter. And there's not a lot about guidance for a boarding committee member, but there is a section on loss of office or excessive absence. So I think the main thing to go through here is that this says that if someone on the board is absent, and there's like three thresholds. It's, you know, all.
Do you like to read it?
Yeah. All of the meetings held during four calendar months, one half or more of the meetings in a calendar year, or three consecutive meetings, sorry, I skipped them. The board, the remaining board members may.
May.
Vote to have the person removed from the board. So I think.
And we did this, I forgot that we even exchanged these emails about this, but so we did this a few years ago, I'm blanking on her name, Amber?
Yeah.
Is that who it was? And she was in school, and we gave her, we agreed to that. I mean, I think that the wrinkle here, right, is that sort of at some level, we all kind of serve at the mayor's pleasure, but I personally, especially if we have one or two people in the pipeline, which I think we do.
Yep.
I mean, if we have a full board with, and we don't have quorum issues, I certainly would much rather like try to help Harry out rather than lose him.
Harry, what kind of absence are we talking about?
Couple months.
Oh, God. It's even, you don't even need that, it's within the rules.
I don't think it even qualifies. I mean, if it really is only a couple, well, I guess three consecutive meetings.
Possibly three months, possibly. No more than that.
And you had to put a timeline on it, it would be.
Be back in April.
March?
Oh. I mean, see, very, very first part of May, probably.
So you're thinking March and April?
Yeah, yeah, I have to go down to Salt and my, my father-in-law passed away.
Right.
Sorry to hear it.
Very sorry to hear that.
That was like a couple weeks ago. So my wife wants to go down there and, you know, help her sister out, take care of the estate, and maybe get rid of the house and clean it all, that kind of stuff.
So for us, it becomes, what, special permits that require four people? We have four right now, and you were just saying we have people in the, in the pipeline.
Do we have two people in the pipeline?
Two, so the, we're gonna have a new full member and a new associate member.
Do we know who, is that announced, or what's going on?
Yes, so it's in the public records, so the full member is gonna be Brenda Saylor.
Yep.
Who was coincidentally.
A neighbor on this project.
A neighbor on a solar project, and we've seen a couple people, I think, historically come through.
Yeah.
And become involved that way.
Excellent.
And a gentleman named Austin Sanders, who's a resident town and works in some version of the planning field, so has experience with planning.
Have they been merrily confirmed?
Yeah, the press, yes, so merrily confirmed to the city council, to the appointment subcommittee, where they expect to be coming forward on the 5th, tomorrow, for the full city council vote.
So we might, we should hopefully have them even for the next meeting.
That was the expectation, is that by the 25th meeting, they would be, they'd be available and sitting with the planning board.
I just wanna, and I know we're on topic here, but I just want to throw this out, it's a little bit of a segue.
That's okay.
I regret doing this. I know the CPTC comes up in March, does it not?
Oh, the training.
The training.
Yes, and so I've already sent a note.
We should make sure that they get.
One, Brenda said she could go, and Austin said he had a conflict, so he couldn't make it, but I did already kind of broach that as one of the.
That's a great.
Boot camp.
Yeah, sorry.
So anyway, so I mean, my feeling on this one, Harry first mentioned it to me, is, you know, as long as we have a full board without him, like, I wouldn't want to do a disservice either to applicants that have to get a unanimous four out of four, or where we have to continue things from meeting to meeting, and I know Harry wouldn't want that either, but as long as we've got people in place, I personally, I want to keep Harry as long as we can.
Totally agree.
Absolutely.
And the one, the one thing I will add, because I thought, it came up actually kind of like at the tail end of this conversation, was the board has a meeting coming up on February 25th, where you have an item, it's one of the cannabis dispensaries. So I did talk to Harry, and it was today, but that would be my one concern, is that if that project continued into March, that they would, that would be a problem. But so, I think the good news is an email.
But if everyone else is here, it's not a problem.
Yeah, with the new people coming in.
But they haven't participated in any of the previous hearings, and I think the Mullen rule is one meeting, so.
Oh, the people, oh, I see, the people that we've already, the Liberty.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
So the good news is that communicating with the applicant, they are on the Cannabis Control Commission's agenda for this Thursday for their provisional license, so the assumption would be that they'll get it, get approved at the state level on Thursday, which would bring them to the board on the 25th with that last step. So I talked to Harry, and if, if for some reason they needed to go to the March 10th meeting, is that something that Harry said he could make that work?
Yeah, I just put it off, I just put, I put it off going down there for a week.
Do we have a provision in our bylaws for participating by phone?
No.
Or video?
No, I think all we have is.
Do we have to have a local bylaw, or is it government, state? I can't remember, that might be an option too, we could at least look at that.
That's a really neat idea.
Because you've put in the time on it.
I believe that's not gonna be necessary, but I did play that one, that's the one application.
That's the only pending one that could be a problem.
We could ask East Hampton to assist with something like that, too.
No, believe it or not, I was on a committee with, with a rural city planner, and I was on this parcel recreation and open land or whatever it was, and we actually had a guy from the Squamby Trust on our, on the computer.
Yeah.
When we had that meeting, and we're talking, it seems so funny, all I can see is the guy's head, you know, with the, you know, with the mouth going, and, you know, we had all the people over there, it was really kind of strange.
Well, it might be worth at least checking that, Jeff, if we can do that, because at least it's another fallback.
Yeah, it's neat.
Okay, excellent. Update on the downtown strategic.
I was gonna say, if you don't want to, I just realized, this is for Park Street, and I'm not exempt from Park Street, I don't have a confirmation for this one, so if you want to do that one first.
Oh, yeah.
Is it the other one?
It's the other one on North Hampton Street.
You're right, it is.
I just ran it, I'm like, oh, I know this one. I'm fine with this.
Yeah, all right, let's do that one, because I think the downtown strategic plan could potentially be a longer discussion, and we don't have to have people sit around.
Sorry.
All right, no problem. All right, so this is review of the financial surety, that was a condition of the special permit.
Hey, everybody, how you doing?
Hi.
Long time no see.
We had a, we had a good string going there. So I'm Mike Zimmer from Saltage, good to see you guys again. Here tonight principally because we're essentially prepared to start constructing this solar array on Park Street. Same time since we kind of last met, mostly what's happened is we finalized the design, worked with the utility, signed the lease with the landowner, entered into an agreement with a contractor to build it, and the last kind of pieces are for us to pull the building permit and start inserting the array. So that brings us specifically to the order of conditions in our site plan approval of special permit. I believe it's the condition number two.
Yep.
Specific to posting a surety for decommissioning.
Yep.
In the amount of $112,000 to escalate 2% per year, and to put together a form of decommissioning that certifies the city attorney, and then come to your board for final approval on that. So over, I guess, the last month, or maybe more, Jeff, your city attorney in Saltage, have been in discussion about the form of surety. I think Jeff raised one key thing to bring up related to the town's bylaw specific to solar, granting the city the right to access the facility and the property if my company fails to decommission it. That wasn't explicit in the forms of agreement that the city has with the landowner, or we have with the landowner, so to accomplish that kind of first task, we worked with the city who drafted a access agreement, which I believe you have as an exhibit, that I provided to Jeff today, and I gave him a hard copy that's been notarized by the landowner, the Crometer Trust, signed by Matt Gall, the secretary of the trust. That effectively specifies our project on the facility, and the rights of the city under the zoning ordinance to enter the property and remove the facility if Saltage fails to do so. Curious, I didn't go into a lot of detail, can understand you didn't have a lot of time to review it, but are there any comments or questions on that?
Questions with the law?
Yeah.
I didn't want to jump in.
No, no.
You just stated with this document to remedy the question that Jeff raised, that the city drafted a document.
Yes.
Is that this?
That's that, yeah.
Okay. And my, I just wanted to, you know, I can see this hasn't been signed yet, so it's in the works. Is it the intention that the landowner, because my concern is that, if I'm understanding correctly, something terrible happens.
Yep.
Your company isn't there, it goes into decay, and we need to step in and use the surety to get in and then get access to remove that.
Right, yeah.
This document, in addition to the other things it does now, has language in there that accomplishes that goal. I want to make sure it's the landowner that's signing, in addition to your company and the city, is that correct, that they're in there? Because it's, you won't be around.
So this is only between, this cites the project company, but the agreement is between the landowner and the city, not the project company?
So it's Crometer Corporation that signed it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And effectively, what this allows the city to do is to pull on the surety that Saltage posts and remove the facility.
All right, sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
Anybody, yeah?
That's thing one. The other, the other part of the discussion, and really the acceptance we're looking for, is the form of decommissioning that we've presented to the city attorney. Jeff can confirm that he is satisfied with the form provided, which is a decommissioning performance bond. I think that, other than being somewhat generic, what the specific performance bonds, and I know, do you guys have that as a copy, too?
No, that was my apologies, but it's a very.
And I brought a copy, you guys brought one, so you guys can.
Would you pass it around just for reference, because I apologize, I did not.
So.
I mean, it's been signed off by the city attorney, right?
Yeah, so the form wasn't really the issue, it was this access.
Right, it's the access that's the thing.
And the form does specifically cite the obligation under the special permit, so it's not totally, it's not totally a form decommissioning bond, it does specifically cite the approvals that this board has given the project. Our obligation under those approvals and how to operate the facility over 20-plus years, and our obligation to remove the facility. Within those obligations, obviously, is a requirement to post decommissioning surety. That bond will essentially be renewed every year for life of the project with that 2% escalator, and then we will remove the system, obviously, with our housing funds. The bond is for the city's protection in case we abandon the facility.
The 2% that is the annual increase over $112,000, when does that begin?
So this year, we post $112,000, next year, we post $112,000 plus 2%, and so on and so on.
What, when in, is it December, is that what I'm reading?
Yeah, so, I don't know, that, for some reason, that's not the signed form, obviously, the, our intent would be to have that, have this kind of accepted in this meeting, and then we would actually pull the actual form of the bond with the surety provider.
So is the date of the 2% increase based on the pulling of the surety?
Yeah, so, right, so it would be, I'm sorry, January, what's tomorrow, February 5th? It would be reposted February 5th, 2021, with a 2% escalation on it.
Because this, this condition has to be satisfied before they get a building permit.
Right, and so what we wanted to do is.
So like, the clock starts when they get the bond.
Yep.
And then, the next year would start 365 days later.
Yep.
Those are my 20s.
And so then the only weird, like, looking at the special permit, like, we've dealt with this language on the commissioning stuff before, but like, I think our requirement says that it has to be in a form that satisfies the city attorney, which it already has, and then it gets submitted to us, but then it's signed by the mayor, so like, we're not voting to, I mean, I guess we're just voting to approve it. It doesn't even require us to approve it, but it's submitted to us, so I think we like accept and approve or something, and then the mayor, the mayor is authorized to sign, but I guess we can't force the mayor to sign it, like, obviously, she's in the loop on all this, but.
And I would say it would, it's, it's practice for this, as it evolves, I think, I would say that in the next solar project, we, we kind of review this a little bit more carefully. So like, so in my opinion, you know, the, the solar company presented certain information during the hearings, that when it, when it actually came to the time, it was that the, the city didn't actually have access to the property, and I think that that was what the gap that this agreement seeks to fill. So I think this is, this took a little bit of time.
But now we have it.
And now we have it to, to reach this agreement in this form.
So next time we have something like this, we can pull this document out and say, we're gonna want to mirror something.
And I think we could avoid this next time, if it's clear at the outset of, of what's expected for city access. I mean, it's really explicit in the zoning, and I think.
I think we did this in one of our more recent decisions, too, where we did condition access to the city, didn't we?
Well, we did one for educational access.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think we're, I think we're gonna face the same kind of scenario with the other project of 50 Florence Road.
Yeah.
When and if that comes to this point, but I think from, from that point on, I think we'll have to approach these a little bit differently to ensure that this extra step doesn't have to happen.
Yeah.
But the city attorney drafted this, it went to the applicant's attorney, and, and it does the thing that we needed to do, which is.
Yeah.
Imagine 20 years from now, that the city needs to go in there, it was determined that it might be beneficial to the landowner as well, that if ever, if someone walks away from this, the landowner would probably want to.
Right.
See this value, and, so it was just a sort of a shortcoming in the lease agreement, I think.
Okay, so I guess, I would say we need like a motion to accept and approve, or something?
I motion to accept and approve the financial surety for 232 Park Street, Saltage.
And how about this document, too?
Including the large-scale solar voltaic decommissioning and removal access agreement.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, excellent.
Great, and then just, just because we're here, and item number three of the special permit, Mike and I were talking earlier, and the company who's actually doing some of the work, you know, I do want to say that they are poised to begin, and so what is happening out there now is erosion controls being installed, there's a construction trailer on the site, and I think what, what, what we're hoping to get pursuant to condition number three, as early as tomorrow, is this written five-day notice of, of the rest of the construction starting, that I think, if everything works out well on their end, they're gonna have a pre-construction meeting with the Conservation Commission, and then things will start to happen.
And so, I can't, I remember when we put that in, it was sort of to keep people in the loop, right, so that that knowledge is out there, but is the idea that Planning Department is gonna look at that and make sure that it's sort of consistent with what we've talked about, or are you going to be communicating with the butters that you've talked to and just giving them a heads up? What's the process you anticipate for that?
Again, it's a little bit of a learning.
Yeah.
Curve, I, this goes to the Planning Department and Building Department, and I think what, after looking at this, what I would value is having this, so that if, and I would probably pass it around Town Hall, so that if people get calls or questions, there's this document which will reference the special permit and kind of just say like, this is, this is notice that we're starting.
And I guess.
I think next round.
You'll be able to look at the special permit and make sure that it's consistent with what we talked about.
We've been doing that.
Right, so that's something else that gives you more to check against.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's the, you know, the Building Department has the building permit application, and the Conservation Commission has their set for review. It, I think next go-around, maybe we ask the applicant to notify the butters.
Okay.
But I think for this purpose, it's just having it.
Yeah.
Available for people and questions, because I've seen now a pattern where, when stuff starts to happen, people call.
Right.
They call.
Anybody.
Anybody they can get on the phone.
Yeah. All right, excellent, I think it sounds great.
It's me.
It's Lindsay.
Anything else from here?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have a problem.
Uh-oh.
When I'm on my little John, I'm gonna need somebody to go to CPA.
Wait, hold on, no, any problem with this solar?
Oh, no.
Saltage thing?
No.
All right.
Nothing to touch like.
No, not yet.
We already voted.
All right. Thank, I think that's our last one here.
I think that's it, yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah.
All right, so next on the agenda is the update on the downtown strategic plan.
All right, and then we're working on revising the date and getting this one.
Yeah, so this is just a template.
Yeah.
It'll be the same thing, except I don't know what these dates even mean, but it'll be with the date that's actually pulled.
Yes.
Yep.
Now we, so there we go, it's gonna be a location. And I will use, I guess, by the HJ to give us.
Or until April.
We can give you a copy, too.
Okay.
As an issue, but once I have, I'll send it to you, so you have a copy, but that would go in the application.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let me know if you need any help getting that.
Could be worse.
Signed, actually.
Okay.
This is good. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's do downtown strategic plan first, Chris, and then we can throw your monkey wrench into the thing.
Yeah.
All right, Jeff, what do you got? Why don't you tweet this at us, 140 characters, your last.
I really quickly wrote the draft.
I'm actually.
Come for dinner in five minutes, honey.
I'm trying to get it.
Oh, you're doing this?
I'm trying to get it onto the screen.
Wow, this is. With your phone? What is this crazy technology?
Sci-tech.
Well, and it was working before, and let's see, is it gonna work now?
It was last words.
Secret serial number, did you just give us your password to your phone?
I have so many good jokes that I'm not gonna make, because we're recording right now.
We are in receipt of the, it's a draft version of the strategic plan. It is fantastic, and so it's really, as, we've kind of talked about things here occasionally, but it's really, should form the foundation for definitely several years' worth of work. And, and part of the key focus of this is to explore and set a process for the three elementary school buildings. So what, what I'm trying to do is bring this to city council tomorrow night, I'll do a more in-depth sort of quick overview of the components and parts, but what we're trying to set off is like a two or three-week public review period. So this is the website that's been up all along for the project. If you haven't looked at it at all along the way, I would definitely encourage.
It's pretty awesome.
All of us to look at this.
It's a great website.
Yeah, the website's great, and then there are copies of meeting materials that fed the process, and then there are videos and your own, Chris.
Oh, hey, that's me!
Did a great introduction to the, the last session. So we're just trying to build a little bit of momentum.
Yeah.
With the plan. It's pretty common, but it's, it's a little staggering to realize that as much as you try to get the word out, there are still tons of people who have no idea.
Yeah.
That anything's happening, so it's a little bit of a struggle.
It's kind of a monumental vision, too, though, like, it's kind of unique to have these three properties at once coming into the market, but also like, to look at sort of, I mean, it's like, almost like a master plan again.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, it's downtown, but it's, but it's like discreet area, but it's, it's a huge scope, like, it can be overwhelming, like, I think.
What, what is going to happen over the next two, three weeks that'll take it from draft to final?
So this is, yep, that's great, thank you. So there is this opportunity, the, the best way for comments to be provided are this online portal here, it's Survey Monkey, but it's, it's a couple very basic questions. Are there any potential school uses, school strategies, or actions that were missing or underrepresented? And then, are there any elements of the downtown strategies or actions that were missed or underrepresented? And then, do you have any other comments or questions about it? I mean, we don't have the consultants forever, so it is, it's a fairly small window, but we're gonna try to do what we've done, which is, you know, press release, using Facebook, hopefully the Gazette would pick up an article, and then the mayor's been good at doing sort of like a mayor's update video. And then what we, you know, there's action steps, and I won't fumble through this, but the action steps are actually, they're not wild and crazy, they're actually pretty confined the action steps are actually, they're not wild and crazy, they're actually pretty confined to looking at some strategies for parking. Where the planning board would, would be really involved is, there is a need to extend the 40R district over one of the school properties, so I think it's Pepin. That when the original 40R got established in 2010, it didn't include Pepin, but we wanted to, because I think it's a really good potential incentive for, for housing development. And then, another sort of key element of this is shared parking. The report does a pretty good job of identifying, there are places where shared parking is happening informally, but there are a lot of towns in Massachusetts and beyond that have figured out shared parking agreements, which could actually formalize that work. So the, the, the key areas that we're looking at are off of Union Street, behind Rite Aid, and then there's two church properties, so especially the church properties, the parking lots are underutilized, I mean, they have events, so, so those are important, but in the off-times, there's potential opportunity there, and we're looking pretty hard. The, the consultant identifies East Hampton Savings Bank lot as a, as a really important factor for anything that would happen in Old Town Hall. And so, there is language in there, draft shared parking agreements, and there's things like that. And then in terms of really big picture, you know, we're, we're trying to set a course over the next two years for there to be a school reuse committee, and that committee will have to use the contents of this report to craft some requests for proposals. And that's, I mean, this, this report gives all the foundational materials, it doesn't tell us exactly this, it doesn't tell us like, this is what Maple Street's going to be, but it gives a range of options that were community-supported, and then it gives these criteria that the school reuse committee could potentially and ideally use to craft the RFP, and then when they're getting responses, they can evaluate them based on these.
That's so awesome, this, I mean, I know you were heavily involved, Chris, I don't know who else really was, I keep forgetting all the names, but like, it's, the people that have been working on this have been doing a ton of work, and it shows, it's a great result.
Kudos to you.
Yeah, well done.
And all of your team, it's a great team.
So I would just encourage you, as the planning board, it would be very important to find a, some time to go through it, and, you know, you can use the online portal, or we can work together on, on anything that you find that's glaringly off. I mean, there's a couple things, you know, people's names are spelled wrong here and there, and we tried to do it once over to make sure they, they got the basics right, but anything that you would see would be helpful, and then I have to formulate a strategy to bring sort of a, a series of zoning amendments through the process, that we want to try to do that before the RFPs goes, goes out. So we have, the, I'll, I'll end here, but the one thing that the consultant said at the end was, you actually don't have until after the schools are empty, you want to be trying to have the RFP out before the schools are empty, and there's a, there's a technical process of the school committee releasing the schools, and that has to be ironed out, but within the next two years, in theory, you know, we will, as a community, be releasing requests for proposals for the redevelopment of schools, so it's super exciting, I mean, it's, I think, Jesse, it's a once-in-a-lifetime.
Yeah, I mean, most towns never have this opportunity.
Right, and if they do, it's one.
Yeah, right.
And so, I've been kind of going over this, and I feel like we're in a, a great spot that we don't have just one, we have three, so we can balance the needs.
And bookending the center of town, like, it, it's remarkable, and I think it, it could have been a wasted opportunity, and I, I think the only way to waste it is not plan for it. Like, I don't, I don't, I mean, I have feelings about preference myself personally, but like, I think as long as everybody's involved and we're thinking about it in advance, like, the result is going to be great.
And man, did we get a lot of involvement, the town showed up for these meetings.
I showed up to one of those publicly, there were 100-plus people.
Yeah, it was really, really impressive.
And people who had been at all three, like, they're just coming.
And still were very active at all, like, participating in a big way.
All right, excellent. Well, yeah, Jeff, keep us updated and let us know what the planning board can do to help, I mean, I think a lot of it is outside of our scope, but whatever we can do to support it, we will.
That's great, thank you.
Wrench time.
All right, wrench time, so, first of all, Harry's wrench.
All right, I was going to say, do you have any feelings on Cernag Buick?
That's not the wrench, but, okay, let's talk about it.
I mean, we're going out of business.
And?
That's outside our...
Probably just, I mean, you're going to have another, like, we're going to have another, what do they call it, feeder's place, that old mill place, just sitting there baking for...
It took a while to fill, but momentum has really changed in our community, I bet it doesn't take as long for that as it did for a feeder. Maybe a pot shop.
Well, they're already talking about it on the other side of the street, right?
Yeah.
There's that facility that they're planning on proposing there.
And certainly what's in the public realm is that, that the company, for across the street, held, held a community outreach meeting.
Right.
And, and basically said, explained a three-pronged kind of vision for a cannabis campus, so it would be, it would be different than what this city has seen before, where it's not just the dispensary, and it's not just cultivation, but what they're trying to add is research and development. In, I went to the community meetings, that's literally how I'm learning about some of that.
Yeah.
They are talking about a partnership with HCC.
Yeah.
And whether or not that actually happens, we don't know, but the, the notion of that is really exciting, because HCC is forming a, a whole cannabis curriculum, and so if there is that partnership, then that would, that would make this unique.
Yeah, I think there's three or four colleges that are doing it now, I know AIC is rolling out a program in Springfield College, they're all doing these programs now, it's great.
Love it. The HCCC.
Yeah.
The Community College Cancer Discovery Club.
It will ultimately be something that ends up, you know, if, if they continue to pursue the project, it'll end up before the planning board.
Yeah.
And the timeline's a variable, but...
Which makes property right across the street potentially valuable to their...
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
Well, I wanted to deal with your CPA issue.
Yeah, I'm going to be gone for a couple of months, or, somebody's not, well, you probably don't have to go, they have nine members on there, rate members, and we used to go have a lot of meetings with the very, very few people there.
Is this really...
Maybe we'll have to have somebody fill in.
No, that's telecom, this is CPA, community preservation.
I think we do need to talk about not just that, but I just realized, too, that I also have a trip coming up to the Alps in March, which I think is this week of the 16th through, I'm not sure if we fall on that, but I am gone from like, the 16th to whatever, the 22nd, or whatever.
That's something good.
The two known dates for the planning board are March 4th and March 18th.
I'm definitely going the 18th.
Oh, March, okay. Oh, no, I'm off by a day, but, sorry, it's March, sorry.
I thought you said March 10th.
Yeah, March 10th and March 24th.
I'm back on the 24th.
Okay.
Great.
Sorry about that.
Well, so CPA, I mean, if you're going to, those are monthly meetings?
Yeah.
So if you're going to miss two meetings, at worst...
It'll be two or three.
I think that's, I think it's better than, I think what we'd have to do is actually name a new CPA rep. I mean, no one's going to get up to speed to be productive for two meetings, I don't think.
Is this technically a, a planning board liaison?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
But it's, it's like we do for PBPC, where we, we voted on Harry...
They have, they have a...
Many years ago.
What, what's the date, what's the date of it?
It's the 3rd Thursday of the month.
I'll do the tour.
Well, the one in March, you may be away.
Well, that's right.
Now that I know your vacations.
That's the third day, you're right.
I can jump in for a meeting, and what's that, I don't even know, I have no clue what the agenda is, or what I need to do, but I can sit there and...
No, that's what I mean, but that's what I'm saying is like...
I'll tell you what, it may not come this month, this coming month, like, not in February, but so, say, March, I guess, sooner or later, I got to be voting on like, a $6 million bond for that thing, so that's going to be a, kind of a big deal.
How close is this to like, quorum issues, like, can they still operate if you're not there?
We've been dealing with that forever on the Cury Committee.
Just leave me, wear your hats and glasses on.
All right, we can work this out before the next meeting.
You're technically the member, right?
Yes.
That's ours, I mean...
I don't think we just send us up, I think we have to, we would have to...
Well, they got a, they have a sub from the Historic Commission, the Historic Commission actually has a sub.
Why don't you ask for permission for a sub?
What?
See if they'll accept it.
If what?
Oh, no, we get to name our member, like, the CPA has a seat that is designated as a planning board representative, and we voted Harry into that role probably in the mid-'80s. So like, I think we could vote on Chris attending the meeting instead of Harry on a certain meeting, or we could certainly vote to replace Harry with Chris, and then go back the other way when he comes back, but I think we should probably vote at some point, but we have another meeting that we can do that at...
On 25th?
Yeah.
And when is the next CPA meeting, is it before that?
Before the 25th, so I'll find out what's going on.
So you can find out from them what they think.
Yeah.
Because the other alternative would be to use the same charter language and, and ask if the CPA would review this and just allow you to not be present.
I'd rather not go through that with them people, you know?
I don't, it's, it's not that, he wouldn't even qualify under this. Even, I mean, the worst, I mean, I guess if he missed three, which is possible, it would be that first one, but I don't think...
I've seen people miss almost a whole year in that Cury thing, and they probably threw the guy off the porch.
No one's going to toss him. So, but more importantly is Chris mumbled a minute ago that he's not going to be here on the 25th.
Right, so I'm actually not going to be here.
So that is a problem for Liberty.
Pretty big wrench for Liberty.
March 25th or February?
February, our next meeting.
Right.
It's tentative, I'm, tomorrow, I'm, my, my boss and I are going to be together, and Trevor, who's going to travel to Calgary.
Don't you think you should go on the 26th?
The meeting is on the 26th, in Calgary, so I got to fly up there beforehand.
What's more important?
That means that...
It's 9:00 AM, so 26th, I have to be there.
Where they have to be present for more than one meeting, or whatever that is.
They can only miss one meeting.
That means we have to push the event, right, because we don't have four people.
Well, if they're going to, if there's going to be a vote, I, I can always come back and watch the video of that meeting.
But it's voting, it's a good point.
But if it's a vote on, at the next meeting, you won't have a quorum.
Well, we can't, we can't push it out to the 3rd of March.
We could do that if, I mean, the thing is like, let's wait until we hear from Chris, if we have to, they're going to have to come on the 25th anyway, because it's on our agenda. I mean, we've already pushed it to then, and we'll have to continue it from then.
Right, and I'll know.
But if we don't have a quorum...
But we'd be here on March 3rd?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought you said it was March 10th.
March 10th would be the next regularly scheduled...
Also be March 3rd and a March 10th.
Oh, we could do a March 3rd, like, special meeting for that.
I have no problem with that.
I have no problem with that either.
I would do that, too. I mean, the alternative is pushing until Harry gets back in May or something. That's not, that's not good, we don't want to, I mean, we have some personnel issues here from...
This might not be a problem, I have one second.
Let's wait till we hear from, till Chris has an idea in the next couple of days, and if we need to, we can then tell Liberty, we're going to have to bump you to the 3rd for final vote.
Yeah, but don't we have to have a...
It's twofold.
Don't we have to have a vote as to when that's going to be, or can you just schedule whenever you want?
If, they're going to have to come on the 25th, and we would continue with that.
Give me one person, just, or whatever, we would, yeah, come in together on the 25th, and then move it to another date.
Right, but we have to keep it public, that process public, so we can't move it now anyway.
I can do that.
So I just wanted to articulate this, so that Cannabis Control Commission meeting that Liberty is on the agenda for is Thursday morning at 10:00. So by, say, 1 o'clock, they will know whether they've achieved that provision or not, and[1580.25]